I had ever met, he was a Pontiac cop.
What kind of years, what years?
The sixties and early seventies.
Rough place then.
Yep, still is, unfortunately.
Less people really, don't you think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, there's, the restaurants and stuff there are great.
Don't need that dude's resume here.
I mean, I try to get out of there. Not a place you want to hang around.
My, uh, my goal was, I'm working in water. My goal was to drive to work with my bike from the back of my car one day, ride it home, and then drive back for the next morning and, um, and, you know, then drive my bike home at night. And I, uh, it takes me too long.
Good evening, I'd like to call the July 8th, 2024 zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Um, if we could all, um, stand, face the flag and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Anderson, can we please have roll call?
Yes.
Member Creel?
Here.
Member Krug?
Here.
Member McDonald?
Here.
Member Seer?
Here.
Member Willner?
Here.
Member Allen?
Here.
And Chair McGalpine.
Here. We do have a full quorum this evening, so we will go ahead, um, and we have the agenda in front of us. We do need to review it and, uh, we can take a motion to approve the agenda as presented. If anyone has any questions, we can entertain those now.
Moves to accept the...
Anyone support?
Go ahead.
I'll support that. Okay, um, all, all in favor of approving the agenda as presented for this evening's meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And then next up, we have, um, approval of our minutes from our meeting on June 10th, 2024. They were included in our packet. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to review them. Uh, if there's any revisions or additions that need to be made, um, we can discuss those now.
Move to approve the minutes from last meeting as presented.
Who supported?
I got Willner.
Willner, thank you.
Sorry.
So we have a support by, I mean, a motion by Allen, a support by Willner, all in favor of approving the minutes from our June 10th, 2024 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so our minutes from that meeting have been approved. Um, we don't have any new business, but before we get started on our first application, um, given the number of things that we have, um, on our agenda this evening, and I want to make sure that we're fair and everyone understands the process in which we hold our meetings, um, all comments will be limited to three minutes, so just make sure that we stay within that. And then also, as we go through the agenda and we open it up to public comments or to the petitioner to state their case, just remember that once we close that portion of the meeting, you are not able to come back and make another comment. It's, um, it's our turn to discuss it, so. We will move on to application PBA 0624. It's a dimensional variance to construct an addition. Um, Ethan Gersky, representing 3072 Robina, parcel 04251821008, east side of Robina between Wiltshire and Beverly, is requesting a dimensional variance to allow the construction of a second-story addition to a non-conforming structure in the required setbacks, front yard setbacks and the distance between dwellings. Uh, Ms. Anderson, if you can just share the details of the petitioner's request, please?
Certainly. 3072 Robina dates back to 1926 and is requesting a dimensional variance to allow the construction of a second-story addition to a non-conforming structure into the current required setbacks. Per Berkeley City Code, Chapter 138 zoning, Article 3, General Provisions, Division 5, Nonconforming Buildings and Uses, Section 138, 154, Requirements for Nonconforming Structures. A building may be added to or enlarged if such addition conforms to the regulations of the applicable zoning district. Such additions or enlargements shall be treated as a separate building and determining conformity to all of the requirements of this chapter. Article 5 District Regulations, Division 17, Schedule of Regulations, Section 138, 527B, the front yard setback shall be 25 feet or equal to the average setback of the six adjacent buildings on the same block, whichever is greater. The front yard setback is 23.5 feet and the average of the six adjacent properties is 23.25 feet, requiring the front yard setback to be 25 feet. A variance of 1.5 feet is being requested. Section 138, 527D, there shall be a distance of at least 15 feet between dwellings. The south side does not meet the required 15 feet between dwellings. The south side distance between dwellings is 12.083 feet. A variance of 2.917 is being requested to add a second floor addition where the south side distance between dwellings is nonconforming. The north side distance between dwelling is 22.5 feet and meets the required distance between dwellings. The property to the south, 3060 Robina, was built in 1950. There is not a certified survey on file for 3072 Robina. There is a survey on record for 3060 Robina with no date that shows that there is 11 and a half feet between 3060 and 3072 Robina, although when a physical measurement from foundation to foundation was done by the applicant, it measures to be 12.083 feet. The applicant is requesting dimensional variance, variances to add a second floor to a nonconforming structure. Distance between dwellings on the south side of approximately 2.917 feet and a variance of 1.5 feet on the front setback. For a variance to be approved by the zoning board of appeals, it shall meet the standards of Section 138-606 of the zoning ordinance based on findings of fact. We request the zoning board of appeals to determine if there are unique characteristics of the property and the applicant demonstrated practical difficulty in order to grant a non-use variance. Motions for approvals and denials have been submitted to you in your packets.
So I'd like to open it up to my, um, fellow board members. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Anderson? Oh, Ms. Seer?
I just, um, want to confirm that we're not extending any of the variances that are currently there. We're just looking to, um, approve the original ones, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. They will just be a straight-up second-story addition.
Thank you.
Are there any other que, Mr. Allen?
Yes, this is, uh, same footprint. Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay, no other questions? Um, since we don't have any other questions, I'm going to ask the applicant, come to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us why your variance should be granted, please.
Good evening. My name's Ethan Gersky. I'm the builder of the project. Um, my address is 2142 Dorothea Road, Berkeley, Michigan. Um, I have the homeowner here, Taylor Grubb. Uh, it's 3072 Robina, and then, uh, our architect, Brian Shachakli. Uh, he lives in St. Clair's source.
Yes.
There you go. So, yeah, I mean, as is, it was said, we are going straight up with this project, be tearing the roof off, uh, building a second story. We are not extending out in any direction. We are fixing the current foundation by removing six-by-six beams that are currently sagging and putting in, uh, six-inch steel beams to support that. Yeah, and then building on top of that, so.
Before I open it up, um, you said 2124 Dorothea?
Uh, 2142.
Okay, so I live on Dorothea. I've never met this man. I just want to disclose that as well.
Okay.
There will be no issues with me voting or anything like that.
Gotcha. I'm the greenhouse.
I'm the brown, red brown cor, horse, house on a corner.
Okay, yeah, I'm four from Henley, so yeah. Yeah, I know your house, yeah.
I'm closer to Central, okay. All right, thank you.
Probably see my crazy kid in a little dump truck running around, so, yeah.
My dog or my granddaughter.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have any, any of us have any questions for the petitioner about the request? Okay, thank you very much. Um, I'm going to open, well, you're good?
Yeah.
Um, at this time, I'm going to open it up to the public. If there's anyone here who would like to, um, provide their opinion or thoughts on why this variance should or should not be granted, if you can come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, we have no one here, but I do have, um, a letter that's dated June 15th. It is from Elliot Peter Sherman and Sally Sherman, who reside at 360 Robina. It was brought to our attention by our next-door neighbors, Cody and Taylor Grubb, 3072 Robina, that there is a variance discrepancy with the space between our homes concerning the construction they are planning. We have learned of the 15-foot space requirements between homes. However, this ordinance was put in place well after either of our two homes were built. The current distance between foundation is 12 feet, 1 inches apart. The 2 feet, 11-inch variance would not bother us as we look forward to being neighbors with the Grubb family for many more years. We fully support their home construction plans. Feel free to reach out if you have any comments or questions. And then we have another one. Um, this one is from Matthew and Dawn Kennedy. It is dated July 3rd. Matthew and Dawn Kennedy residing at 3048 Robina are in full support of the dimensional variance request of Ethan Gersky, representing 3072 Robina. We encourage the addition of a second story to the existing structure as it would fit the neighborhood and encourage the family to stay and grow in our neighborhood and city. We hope you will give the variance so an existing structure can be approved upon. We do not have any other comments. Can I say it? Okay, so we've closed a portion of the public hearing. Um, if there are any comments or questions that we could, I'll open it up to the board for discussion.
So I have a question. I mean, I understand they're not extending any further, the variance any further than it already is, which I'm okay with, but since there's less than 15 feet between the buildings, is the fire marshal requiring a one-hour rating or any sort of special construction on the...
That's on, if you have less than five feet, fire separation is required. So you're good with, uh, that. Anyone else? Well, I think we might be ready for a motion then. If someone would like to make a motion to approve or deny this request, we can take that now.
I'll do it. Uh, I motion to approve the variance as requested. Uh, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. That's the result of the dwelling being constructed in 1928 and the dwelling to the south being conducted in 1950 prior to the current zoning codes. The need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners for the same reason. Strict compliance of the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. That certainly applies here. The requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as the other property owners. I think the two public comments are supportive of that. And finally, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. As we've talked about, they're going straight up and no other, uh, expansion to the existing footprint. For those reasons, I make a motion to approve the variance as requested.
I'll support.
Okay, so we have a motion and a support. Uh, before we do take a roll call vote, is there anyone else that wants to make a comment or has a question on the motion? Seeing there's no one, okay, we'll take the vote, please. Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
Member Allen?
Yes.
Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
And Chair McGalpine. Yes, your motion has been approved for your dimensional variance. Okay, next up is application number PB 0724. It is a dimensional variance to construct an addition. Uh, petitioner is Great Lakes Building Company, working at 1992 Gardner, parcel 042518453001, located on the east side of Gardner between 11 Mile and Cambridge. Um, they are requesting a dimensional variance to allow the construction of a second-story rear dormer to a nonconforming structure in the minimum, in the required minimum yard setbacks for an exterior side yard on a corner lot. If you could just share the details, please?
Certainly. The applicant, Great Lakes Building, representing 1992 Gardner, is requesting a dimensional variance to allow the construction of a second-story rear dormer to a nonconforming structure in the required minimum yard setback for exterior side yards on corner lots. Per Berkeley Code, Chapter 138, Article 3, General Provisions, Division 5, Nonconforming Buildings and Uses, Section 138, 154, Requirements for Nonconforming Structures. A building may be added to or enlarged if such addition conforms to the regulations of the applicable zoning district. Such addition or enlargement shall be treated as a separate building and determining conformity to all the requirements of this chapter. Per Section 138, 527C, Schedule of Regulations, Minimum Yard Setback, Exterior Side Yard on Corner Lots. When a rear yard abuts a rear yard, the exterior side yard setback shall be not less than 10 feet. 1992 Gardner dates back to 1948 and was constructed with the north side yard setback at 6.03 feet and is nonconforming to current minimum exterior side yard setback requirements of 10 feet. All other setbacks are met. A dimensional variance for approximately 3.97 feet on the north exterior side yard setback is being requested. For a variance to be approved by the zoning board of appeals, it shall meet the standards of Section 138-606 of the zoning ordinance based on findings of facts. We request the zoning board of appeals to determine if there are unique characteristics of the property and the applicant demonstrated a practical difficulty in order to grant a non-use variance. Motions for approvals and denials have been submitted to you in your packets.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Anderson? Okay, seeing that we don't have any questions, I will go ahead and ask the applicant to come to the podium, state your name, address, um, for the record, and tell us about the variance and why you believe we should grant it.
Hi, Kurt Rankin, um, 310 Woodlawn Avenue, Royal Oak, Michigan. Uh, Great Lakes Building Company. We too are requesting the variance just to go straight up off the back of the house. Um, commonly done throughout the area, um, just due to the corner lot, um, setback requirements is why we have to, to be here. And, um, I do believe that those setbacks were put in place well after the home was built. So, um, we can, uh, comply with all the other setbacks and regulations and hope that, uh, we can get approval for this.
Okay, um, I'd like to ask if any of my fellow commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, at this point, I would like to open it up to the public. If there is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, if you could please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Looks like we don't have anyone for this either, so. Um, we do have correspondence, um, from July 6th that was at our table. Um, it was a petitioner by Jim and Jane Bitner, who live on the southeast corner at 1992 Gardner. They are, we are asking the city of Berkeley for a dimensional variance constructed of a second-story rear dormer to a nonconforming structure in the required minimum yard setbacks for interior, exterior side yards on the corner lot. Um, they stated four reasons why, and they have, uh, several signatures on here and also included, uh, a drawing of what they're prepar, what they'd like to do uh, when they went around to the neighborhood. Okay, so I will close the portion of the public hearing and open it up for discussion.
Once again, I think, uh, it's just allowing them, reapproving the original variance because it, the house was built before the variances that are currently in place were put in place. So, um, I think it makes sense to allow the dormer.
Are you making a motion?
If, does it, I will if nobody else has any comments. Okay, okay. Let me find my spot. Uh, in the matter of PBA 07-24, parcel 04-25-18-453-001, motion to approve the requested variances from Section 138, 54, Section 138-526, and Section 138-527C of the Berkeley City, City of Berkeley zoning ordinance to grant a variance of approximately 3.97 inches?
Feet.
Feet, sorry, on the north side of the yard setback, where 10 feet is required. That does not conform to the applicable zoning ordinance regulations based on the following findings. The need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical property, conditions of the property, which basically, um, the house predated the current zoning, so...
Ordinance.
Ordinance. The need for the variance is not the result of the actions of the property owner or previous property owner. Um, it was approved to build the house as it was, so that makes sense. Strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owners from using the property for a permitted purpose or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. Um, we, we would, uh, be burdening them with making it smaller, not, not fitting into the house in the way it looks. The requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the application as well as other property owners. Um, it makes sense, making it smaller would not be beneficial. And the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. And there are other houses right by that property that have this, a similar dormer, so.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Um, who would like, anyone would like to support that motion? Mr. Krug? Um, before we do take roll call vote, just want to make sure that everyone is comfortable. There are no questions or concerns with the motion? Nope. Okay, go ahead and, if you could take a roll call, please. Member Willner?
Yes.
Member Allen?
Yes.
Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
And Chair McGalpine. Yes, so your motion to, uh, for the dimensional variance has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is application PBA 0824. It's the determination of a commercial message for mural artwork. Um, it is petitioners Bethany Nixon for 2985 12 Mile Road, parcel 042518205028, south side of 12 Mile Road between Robina and Wakefield. Um, they, she is requesting that we determine whether or not there's a commercial message included in the, uh, mural work of art that was provided in our packet.
2985 12 Mile is located in the DDA and eligible for the DNA mural program. DDA has approved the mural program application to Rewear Vintage and Avenue Group Real Estate. Method of approving a proposed mural is contingent upon the zoning board of appeals determining if the design contains a commercial message. Property owner of 2985 12 Mile LLC is allowing Rewear Vintage of 2965 12 Mile Suite 200 permission to have a mural displayed on the back southeast side of the building facade at 2985 12 Mile. The zoning board of appeals has the authority to determine if a mural or work of art contains a commercial message. If the Z, if the ZBA determines that the proposed design does not contain a commercial message, it shall be considered a mural of, or work of art and can proceed as installation. If the ZBA determines that the proposed design does contain a commercial message, the design would be subject to regulations of the sign ordinance, including height, area, et cetera.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Anderson? Nope, all right. I would just ask that the petitioner come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us, um, why you do not believe there's a commercial message in your proposed artwork.
Okay, good evening. Um, my name is Bethany Nixon. I live at 2868 Bacon Avenue in Berkeley, and I also own the business Rewear Vintage directly to the east of the building that the mural would be on at 2965 West 12 Mile Road. I am kind of the project manager of this, so, um, that's why I'm the applicant. And I didn't give him any direction to what to put on it or anything about my business. So, I guess that's why I don't think it's a commercial message. I'm not.
Okay, do we have any questions for the petitioner? Nope?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Um, is there anyone here, uh, in attendance for the meeting this evening that would like to speak or comment on this? You can come to the microphone, state your name and record, name and address, please.
Sure, Katie Wagner, 3696 Cumberland Road. I'm the owner of 2985, uh, 12 Mile Avenue Group Real Estate, and I just want to say I think it's going to be a beautiful addition and it will really help that back alley, so I'm all for it.
All right, thank you very much for coming and for stating your opinion. All right, uh, we do not have any correspondence, so I will close the, uh, public portion of the meeting this evening and open it up to my fellow commissioners for discussion. Um, we all have the artwork, the proposed artwork in front of us, and they also do have, um, we have a signed mural installation and maintenance agreement as well that was included in our packet. Mr. Allen?
Just a quick comment, uh, looking this over, it really is a very, very nice-looking mural. And I love the mural program downtown. It brings people's eyes to Berkeley.
Yep.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any commercial message in what I'm looking at, so.
So, I, I think it's very cute and really no message that I can see.
And a point of clarification, if we were to say it was, we would presumably have to say what that commercial message would be, right? We can't just, you know, we have to make a finding that there, this is the commercial message that we are finding.
Correct.
Any kind of subtle inclusion in the image that would let you know what that business is? Some name, like remember when Buttercave had them remove a couple of the verbiage that they had in there? Cause it, yeah, so.
But it's a business again?
The name of the business is, uh, Re, Re, Rewear?
Uh, yeah, it's Rewear Vintage. I'm just selling vintage clothing, yeah.
I do have, um, one question. I see records. It's beautiful. I love it. It, it would be great, but do you sell records?
Uh, we have one creative records on our counter, yes, but that's not our primary business.
Yeah, I honestly, I mean, I, I see that, but I would just as assume, just as soon assume it was a flower shop or something to that effect. I mean, I don't, it's just so hard, it's, it's so intertwined that for me, it's hard to really pinpoint any sort of message on here.
Yeah, I don't see anything.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, the blank piece of paper in the middle. Is there going to be any message on that?
Is that a window?
Last block window.
Oh, duh, all right. Yeah, I saw the real picture now. As soon as I said that, I went, oh, yeah, all right. Thank you, great.
Okay, so, um, if there are no other, um, comments or questions, we can entertain a motion. Um, just simply stating that we do, um, believe that there is not a commercial message in the proposed mural as we're viewing it today.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Krug's got the motion?
That we consider it a piece of artwork. Uh, application number BPA 0824, uh, Bethany Dixon for 2985 12 Mile Road, parcel number 04-25-18-205-028, south side of 12 Mile Road between Robina and Wakefield, in that, uh, we will approve it as being a piece of artwork.
Second.
Can I just put one condition on there for you to entertain? Can we state that they are not, they cannot become just a record seller?
As long as they do not become a record seller.
I just, I just feel like we just need to make sure that that's covered, so. Okay, we have a motion by Krug. Do we have a support?
I'll support it.
Okay, any further discussion before we take a roll call vote?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that that qualification states that they will not become exclusively a record seller, just to make sure that we're...
Agreed, yep.
Okay, okay, so we'll add that. Um, are you good?
Yep.
Okay, so Mr. Krug is, and Ms. Seer are good with the revision to the motion of making this, uh, state that they cannot become an exclusive record seller? Um, and no one, no other questions? We'll go ahead and take a roll call, please. Okay, Member Allen?
Yes.
Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
And Chair McGalpine. Yes, so your motion has been approved unanimously. Yes, so your motion has been approved unanimously, and we look forward to seeing your new mural.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is application number PBA zero nine two four, determination of a commercial message for a mural work of art on time travelers located at three one one six twelve mile road, parcel zero four two five zero seven four five four zero four one, located on the north side of twelve mile between Griffin and Robina. And they are requesting that we review the artwork as they have proposed and determine whether or not it contains a commercial message. If you could just go ahead and share the details, please.
Three one one six twelve mile road is located in the DDA and eligible for the DDA mural program. DDA has approved the mural program application to time travelers. Method of approving a proposed mural is contingent upon the zoning board of appeals determining if the design contains a commercial message. The applicant is proposing to have a mural work of art painted on the north and west walls of the building. The zoning board of appeals has the authority to determine if a mural or work of art contains a commercial message. If the zoning board of appeals determines that the proposed design does not contain a commercial message, it shall be considered a mural or work of art and can proceed with installation. If the ZBA determines that the proposed design does contain a commercial message, the design would be subject to the regulations of the sign ordinance, including height, area, et cetera.
Okay, do we have any questions regarding the petitioner's request? Yes, Ms. Air?
I'm just a little confused and maybe when the petitioner comes up, it will make more sense, but time travelers facing the parking lot, and then it's, it's bordered by a building, so is the other part going to be, that would be the west side, is that going to be above where the council thrift is?
Our new location.
Yeah, this is their new location.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is three one, one one six, their new location.
Got it. Oh, got it, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I would ask that the petitioner come forward, state your name and address for the record, and explain to us, or just share a little bit about your mural as you presented it to us.
Hello, my name is Michael Morgan. I live at one zero four nine five Borgman Avenue in Huntington Woods. The mural is just meant to be a celebration of pop culture. We asked Kobe Solomon, who did the butter mural that you referred to earlier, also the Russell and the Maury, so very well known, and said, you know, we want to do something that just celebrates, you know, a culture that we're part of, and basically gave him carte blanche to design anything that he thought met that, because again, we wanted this to be specifically an artistic endeavor and not, you know, just, you know, plastering things that we sell up there. In his original design, we actually asked him to make it more abstract in order to reinforce the fact that it was not meant to be a commercial piece or advertisement in any way. So, yeah, that's it, we're, we're very excited about it, our neighbors are very excited about it, and hopefully approve.
Okay, do we have any questions? Yes, Mr. Milner, Willner?
These two that, is this how it's going to look, or is it going to be abstract like, like these two, I guess?
It's going to be abstract like those two. That is just the original composition that he had put together, but they will be in a Picasso Guernica style.
Yes, Ms. Air?
I do see a couple of words on it. Are those just the names of the people in the picture, or are the, is that not going to be included?
On the bottom?
In the, where it says north wall elevation, like the, a couple of the athletes, like the, it might be.
It might just be the names of the athletes.
Okay, and those would be on the.
They probably wouldn't be in the abstract version, be my guess.
Okay.
I think he had just used those to kind of give an example of what would be in that space.
Okay. Mr. Allen?
Yeah, a great looking mural, really, really catches the eye. But the one thing that hit me right away and kept coming back as I was reviewing this was, there is a ton, even in semi abstract form, of copyright infringements going on here. And it concerns me, concerns me. The commercial message, they are not conveying a commercial message about them, but they are conveying a commercial message of all these other superheroes and things that are easily recognizable. Bart Simpson, for example. I'm really concerned about that.
But his copyright, part of what we're.
I was just going to ask.
To do with what we're deciding?
I believe our.
Our, our only purpose is to decide whether there's a commercial message.
That's correct. Our ZBA is determining if there's a commercial message. As far as, you know, legal aspects of that, that, you know, could, you know, be something.
I can speak to that if you'd like. In fact, the DDA did actually ask us to, to look into that.
Okay.
Because it is being done in what is first considered to be, well, fan art, fan art is allowed, and transformative medium is allowed, so those companies don't do murals, right? They don't sell murals, so the fact that we are taking it, allowing Kobe to interpret it any way that he wants to interpret it, that we are, specifically in the licensing, we're not allowed to commercialize this in any way. We can't put it on a shirt, we can't, you know, other than incidental inclusion in an advertisement, say like a picture of our building, we aren't allowed to, to use it in any way like that. And then there's, so there's transformative, there's fan art, and then there is, there's one other exception to the rules, and we're trying to make sure that we land squarely within those areas so that it doesn't infringe, so.
Okay, so not within our determination, but also that's something that they brought up and.
We consulted a lawyer, we asked questions, I, I do not want to be on the wrong side of that conversation.
Yeah, no, and between you and the, yeah, between you and the DDA that appears to be handled. Do we have any more questions for the petitioner? Yes, Mr. Allen?
I just wanted to give a little bit of the history behind that. I have a friend who purchased a business in Mount Pleasant, Michigan, and it was a bar, and he, he was a big fan of the Flintstones, so the name of the bar changed to Rubbles. And through the entire interior from floor to ceiling were these larger-than-life-size Flintstones characters. Well, about six weeks after he opened, he got a not very pleasant letter in the mail from Hanna-Barbera, and they were coming at him hard, really hard. And I know what he went through, and I'd hate to see it repeated.
Okay, thank you very much, and at this point, we will, I will open it up to the public to see if they have any comments. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, and we do not have any correspondence, email or written, I will close this portion of the public hearing for this item and open it back up to the, my fellow board members for discussion or a motion.
I can't find a commercial message on here.
I agree.
Are you making a motion?
Happy to.
Okay.
I make the motion to approve, well, I guess the motion to deem this a work of art that does not convey a commercial message, and therefore would approve the request before the ZBA as written.
Second.
So we have a support from Mr. Creel and a support from Mr. Willner to have, our review is that we do not, we've confirmed that there is not a commercial message in the proposed mural. Are there any other questions or comments before we take a roll call vote? Seeing that there are none, I will go ahead and ask Ms. Anderson to take the vote. Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
Member Allen?
No.
Chair McGalpine?
Yes, so your mural has been approved by us to not contain a commercial message. Good luck.
You are good?
Yeah.
Okay, next up is application PBA eleven twenty-four. It is a dimensional variance request to construct an addition. Ryan and Rebecca Duffy at three six zero zero Kenmore Road, parcel zero four two five zero seven four seven nine zero zero seven, located on the east side of Kenmore between twelve mile and Edwards, is requesting a dimensional variance request to allow the construction of a rear second story addition to a nonconforming structure in the required minimum side yard total setbacks. If you could just share the details, please.
The applicant for thirty-six hundred Kenmore is requesting a dimensional variance to allow the construction of a second story to a nonconforming rear addition for approximately three point zero eight feet on the required minimum yard setback. Total of two side yards is fifteen feet. Per Berkeley City Code, Chapter one thirty-eight, zoning article three, general provisions, Division five, nonconforming buildings and uses, section one thirty-eight dash one fifty-four, requirements for nonconforming structures. A building may be added to or enlarged if such addition conforms to the regulations of the applicable zoning district. Such addition or enlargement shall be treated as a separate building in determining conformity to all of the requirements of this chapter. Article five, District Regulations, Division seventeen, Schedule of Regulations, Section one thirty-eight dash five two six, Table R one D, Minimum Yard Setback, at least one side yard, five feet, total of two side yards, fifteen feet. Thirty-six hundred Kenmore dates back to nineteen forty-one. The rear addition to the dwelling was constructed in nineteen eighty-four. Approved plans for the addition in nineteen eighty-four did not have side yard setbacks indicated on the site plan. In nineteen eighty-eight, an addition was constructed to the back of the garage and removed the breezeway between the dwelling and the garage, creating an attached garage. Side yard setbacks are north, five point two five feet, south, six point six seven feet, with a total of two side yards of eleven point ninety-two feet, leaving a deficiency of three point zero eight feet to the required fifteen feet. There is a total of twenty-four point twenty-nine feet between dwellings on the south side and seventeen point zero eight three on the north side, meeting section one thirty-eight five twenty-seven D, the required distance between dwellings. There is a discrepancy in the two side yard setback totals from the notice that was sent out and the variance being requested. Upon further confirmation from the adjacent north property survey, it was shown measurements to be five point two five rather than a side yard setback of five point eight three three. I believe the side yard setback became nonconforming when the garage addition removed the, the breezeway and made it an attached garage. Prior to that, it probably met all of its conformity as far as all the setback requirements with it being at a detached garage, you know, being less than five feet for the detached garage and the house was set in. So I believe at that time, it met all of its conformity, but in eighty-four, or in eighty-eight, when it was approved to do the addition on the back and take that breezeway out and making it an attached, you know, garage, that created a nonconformity in eighty-eight. I provided the, the plans that were submitted, there was very little details on those plans in eighty-four and eighty-eight when they were approved. For a variance to be approved by the zoning board of appeals, it shall meet the standards of section one thirty-eight dash six oh six of the zoning ordinance based on findings of fact. We rec, we request the zoning board of appeals to determine if there are unique characteristics of the property and the applicant demonstrated a practical difficulty in order to grant a non-use variance. Motions for approval and denial have been provided to you.
Okay, so does anyone, any of my fellow commissioners have questions for Ms. Anderson regarding this?
Yeah, I have a question. So when, what, what year did they purchase the house? Do you know what?
Which year did they purchase the house? I'm sorry, I don't have that information. What year did you purchase?
Two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen.
Okay, that's it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Change in footprint, or the footprint remains the same?
The, the footprint is going to be remaining the same. They're proposing to put the addition on, a second story addition on the rear addition that was done in eighty-four, and going up on that rear addition that was done in eighty-four. Nothing, nothing on the front part of the house.
That clears it up for me, thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? If not, I'd like the petitioner to come up and just give us some background information on why your variance should be granted. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Ryan Duffy, thirty-six hundred Kenmore Road. The request is, as said, to just go directly above the existing addition. When we designed it, we did not know that we were existing nonconforming, and so then we did our due diligence and determined that we were not meeting the requirements, which is why we're here today. The, we meet the fifteen between dwellings requirement, but the, the combination of the five, or the overall fifteen requirement is all that's missing. We do meet the five on either side, which is not a total of fifteen.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you, Mr. Duffy. We will, I'll now ask if there's anyone from the public who wishes to come up and speak on this. If you do, if you could please state your name and address for the record. Okay, no, you.
I, I, I work for the building.
Okay, okay, perfect, okay. All right, I will close that portion of the public comments. I do have two emails that were received. One was on July eighth, and it says, "Good afternoon, John and Haley Hauger, Hauger," apologize if I'm saying your name incorrectly, "property owners at three six nine six Kenmore, approve the variance for our neighbors Ryan and Becky Duffy at three six zero zero Kenmore." Thank you. And another one from Carrie and Gary Lightner, lighter, Lightner, "property owners at three five eight one Kenmore, they also approve the variance for our neighbors Becky and Ryan at three six zero zero Kenmore." And that is the only correspondence we have.
Also, I, I do have one more letter that I had signatures of the neighbors. If I could write that?
So we also, we can put into the record, we'll pass it around, but there's another correspondence or a sign from the neighbors as well that we can consider. While we're all taking a look at that, the public portion is closed, I will open it up to discussion.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes, Ms. Air.
The, the home directly to the south, is that one of the people that, that approved it? So thirty-five eighty-one, is that your immediate neighbor?
Yeah, that's actually the first signature of the.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we'll say.
If not, if we are ready for a motion, we will entertain that. If there's further discussion, I'd ask that you let us know.
I'll.
Ms. Air, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve if no one else has any comments or doesn't, votes not to have my voice heard again. In the matter of PBA eleven dash twenty-four, parcel zero four dash twenty-five dash oh seven dash four seven nine dash double oh seven, motion to approve the requested variances from section one thirty-eight dash fifty-four and section one thirty-eight dash five twenty-six of the City of Berkeley zoning ordinance to grant a variance of approximately three point oh eight feet where the minimum yard setback total of two side yards is fifteen feet as required. That does not conform to the applicable zoning ordinance regulations based on the following findings. The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. Once again, this was a pre-existing condition on the house before they moved in and before the ordinance were set up, ordinances were set up. The need for the variance is not the result of the actions of the property owner or the previous property owners. I would say, no, they're probably not, they didn't realize they were nonconforming, or the conformity, or the regulation was not in existence at the time. Strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for the permitted purpose or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. Yeah, if they can't increase. Yeah, if they can't increase the size of their house or add-on because of the non-conformity, then that would be a problem. The requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the application as well as other property owners. Yes, they're not really increasing the conformity, they're just, or the non-conformity, they're just maintaining it. And finally, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. It will not be noticeable from the street, and so it's really not gonna impact the surrounding properties.
Do we have a support?
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion by Sayer, a support by Krug. Is there any further discussion on this before we take a roll call vote? Okay, if we can proceed with the roll call vote, please, Ms. Anderson? Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
Member Allen?
Yes.
Member Creel?
Yep.
And Chair McAlpine?
Yes, so your motion for your dimensional variance has been approved. Thank you.
Okay, so next up on our agenda, is there any new business that we have, Ms. Anderson? Let's see, other business? We have no new business, correct? Oh, no, correct, I'm sorry. So, that's okay. So under other business, we have two items for discussion. Number one is the rules of procedure that we need to vote to approve. Are there any questions about the rules of procedure that were included in our packet? Nope. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote to approve, please. Or do we, I'm sorry, we need a motion. Motion. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve as written.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, if we can take the vote, please, now? Okay, motion by Willner, supported by Creel. Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
Member Allen?
Yes.
Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
And Chair McAlpine? Yes, so our rules of procedure have been approved based on the packet, are the ones that were included in our packet, yes. Next up is election of officers, and I will go ahead and step down. I believe that's what I'm supposed to do, correct? No harm in doing that, yeah. No, I think I, I think I have to step down and then I think we have to vote to nominate someone for both the chair and the vice chair.
Well, I'll motion to renominate Chair McAlpine.
I'll second that.
Okay, we need to take a roll call vote? Yeah. Okay, if we could have a roll call vote? You accept that, right? I will accept, yes, sorry. If we could take a roll call vote, please? Certainly. Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
Member Allen?
Yes.
Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
And it passed with a five-thirds vote. All right, perfect, thank you, everyone. We do need... Or two-thirds, I'm sorry. A motion to elect a vice chair, if we could go ahead and entertain that.
I'd like to make a motion for Steve Allen. Member Allen?
Thank you.
All right, do we have a support for that?
I'll support that.
Okay, so we have a support, a motion and a support for Mr. Allen to remain the vice chair, if we could take a roll call vote on that, please? Member Willner?
Yes.
Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
And Chair McAlpine? Yes, thank you. We appreciate your volunteering. Next up is the staff and the board member report. Do we have, what would you like to share with us, anything? Okay, yes, I have a couple of items. Let's see, Member Creel and Member McDonald have been reappointed by City Council for zoning board of appeals members, so your new expiration determination, or your date is till twenty twenty-seven. Yeah, three years, yeah.
Wow.
Yes, three-year term. We are getting close to being live BSNA online. We're getting close, so that will be coming anytime. We are still looking for alternate zoning board of appeal members, so keep that out there. Let's see, the community development monthly report for May twenty twenty-four was in your packet. The zoning ordinance steering committee activity update for June, for the June draft. We have a planning commission city council joint meeting tomorrow, so that was provided to you as far as the update on that. And then I have one item that Stan from IT wanted to relay, that our emails will be changing. Right now, we're BerkeleyMish.org. It will be going to BerkeleyMI.gov, so your emails that you have will be the same as far as your initial and your name, but rather than BerkeleyMish.org, it will be BerkeleyMI.gov. More information will come to you on that, but I believe when the transition is first occurring, it will still follow to your current emails, but just be, you know, aware that our emails are changing and... Okay, and that's all I have. Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone, any applicants for August? Due date is this Friday, so I'll let you know once I know. Okay. All right, Councilman Henanen, is there anything you'd like to share with us?
I have a question. Have you ever denied one of these where we're going straight up inside the existing non-conforming envelope? I can't think of any.
Since I've been here, no.
No, I don't believe we ever have.
Right.
There is denials that are on record, you know, where, there has been some.
Have been.
I mean, I could always get you a report and kind of show that.
Okay.
Unfortunately, a lot of these older homes from nineteen twenties and nineteen forties are non-conforming.
Right, and I think my recollection in talking with the city council that they're also okay with this going up, and I'm not sure if in the zoning ordinance rewrite, we can just make this allowed by right.
Not having come in front of us.
So that we can streamline this for everyone involved.
That's one thing to discuss.
If everyone is okay with it and legally were allowed, I think I'm gonna take that forward. It'll just save the applicants, the city, you know, everyone.
There, that would be a discussion to, you know, in regards to the pros and cons of that, because in regards to something that might not be burdensome, you know, there, you know, obviously discussions that, yeah.
And I think part of that would be interesting to see the ones that were denied.
Yeah.
And why, you know, if there is maybe something that we do want to still have these come, so.
Yeah, I can gather some information on that. All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak? We have no one in attendance. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting at seven fifty-six, seven fifty-seven PM.
So moved?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Allen, a support by Willner to adjourn our meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are done. Hey.
Everyone had a great holiday, coming back ready to roll.
That was good.